All right, good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Public Hearing for Groton Estates on Monday, October 23rd, 2023. So this is to solicit public, for his public comment, to solicit public comment from the electors of the City of Groton and all others qualified to vote concerning the proposed sale of 80 Nathan Hale Road, PIN 168816836518E and 0 Shanacocet Road, PIN 168816835656E. And the city's acceptance of an easement over 320 Shanacocet Road, PIN 168816839578, and PIN 168816839578. And with that, I'll turn it over to our planner, Leslie, for the presentation, and then we'll see if we have any public comment.
Good evening. This is in regard to the presentation that you saw from Mr. Belfonte, who owns Groton Heights. We had that last October.
Groton Estates.
Oh, sorry, Groton Estates, thank you.
Right, different place.
Sorry. I do know that. Appreciate it. So Groton Estates is looking to purchase from the city. There are two parcels in the center of Groton Estates on a slope. It's open space, and it has the proposal that Mr. Belfonte made to all of you and that we've been discussing is they would like to put in a community building that would have their leasing office, things like, you know, equipment for computers for the neighborhood and physical education type, not education, you know, fitness room. So he's, so that's what they're proposing, and they are also looking at giving, granting us an easement as part of the same, it's not a quid pro quo, they're paying for the property. The purchase price would be $68,000 based upon a recent appraisal done. There were two appraisals done recently, but one of them was that, an appraisal for the property if the uses were limited. So not allowing more housing, not allowing anything other than basically what I've described to you. And in conjunction with that is the allowance of a, an easement on the east side of Groton Estates, down by the water, by Birch Plain Creek. And this would allow us to move forward with a project that we've been working on for a long time, certainly predates me. And it would allow us to extend Birch Plain Creek, the area that we have for Birch Plain Creek, so that we, there'd be an extension along that area. If you look at page... One more, two more. That's it. If you look at the area number three, that would give, that would allow people to walk from the area that's set aside for Birch Plain Creek below, just below Branford Manor, and continue on, and then we will proceed with talking with the other adjacent property owners, trying to get, looking to make arrangements to be able to continue that trail even further. So let me just go over the numbers on this sheet, so everybody knows. I know you've all been down there, but, so everybody's clear on what is there. There is a, number one is the area that we're talking about selling to Mr. Belfonte. Number two is part of the easement. Number three is the area that would be the city park, also part of that easement, so that people don't, aren't wa, they continue to walk the trail, not walking in the street. Number four is a proposed dog park that is proposed by Mr. Belfonte. And number five, all the way on the other side, across the street from the open space, is an existing playground. There is no play equipment or anything other than grass on this, on the parcels that we're looking to sell to Mr. Belfonte. So if you look at the plans, there will still be open space allowed. If you look at the next page, you'll see the layout, there's, there's some parking, there's the building, but there is still open space. And the open space is on the slightly flatter part, which is, except for, everybody wants to roll down the hill. Other than that, it's the more usable piece. This, the building would be built into the hill. And then there are the floor plans. But I think what's most important, and continue through, and you'll see an elevation, again, the style and the height of the building and all of those things would be regulated by planning and zoning. Planning and zoning has, in fact, they have issued a favorable recommendation to the council for an 824, basically citing that it does comply with and is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which is the big picture vision document for the, for the city. And so it does, it is consistent with that. That was a document that was adopted and was done with public input, so it is not just a planning department type of a document. That's a citywide document that was done with public, public input. I do think that the most important part of this document and what was given to you is the number of signatures that were submitted. There was a, Mr. Belfonte in the leasing office, they put a, they put a petition out, and there are, I believe, over almost 80 signatures. And for all of us who know what it's like to go door to door, getting 86 ensures is impressive. This is definitely something that will improve the neighborhood. It is very consistent with the things we're looking to do. All over the city is building neighborhoods, figuring out how do we make places that people can meet together, be together, be constructive, have constructive opportunities. And again, this is an agreement that would, it would have restrictions, that's what the, there was a higher assessed, appra, excuse me, a higher appraised value if there were no restrictions on the parcel. This is, Mr. Belfonte was looking for, to do this project. It is, so this is the, the project that he would bring later to planning and zoning for all the proper permits.
There will still be lots of open space in this area. If you look at the footprint of the building, it's only about one-eighth of the area, and it is tucked in a corner. So I know that was important, open space was important for kids to run around and play football and things like that, so we wanted to ensure that that was preserved.
And this is not, this is, what's before you is to enter into, allow the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Belfonte with these, all of the things that I've described as the guidelines. The, the plans, how that, the intent is definitely important to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's not, it is something that will come to them and they will discuss, just as they would discuss any other application. So there's room for modification if that is seen as in the best interest of the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. With that, I will open the floor to the public for any public comment. If you wish to speak, please come up and sign the, the paper with your name and address, we have that for the record. And then you have five minutes to speak. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, and we will now adjourn this public hearing at 6:13. So the public hearing is now closed. We will move on to the next meeting, which is the Committee of the Whole for Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Roll call. Clerk McCura, please conduct a roll call.
Thank you, Leslie.
Mayor Hedrick.
Let me say where you're at, in case the council has questions.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Diawo, Counselor Norris, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Carter, and Finance Director Yuhas are present. And Lisa McCabe, Counselor McCabe from, on via Zoom.
Okay. So the first item under new business is the sale of parcels of Groton Estates and the proposed ground, the use, use of the grounds. Are there any questions from the council regarding the presentation or regarding this action item? Counselor Sheffield.
Yes. What is the, you said the appraised value at $68,000? Is that the exact amount? Would that be additional figures with that? Is that the actual sale? Is that going to be the sale, Ron? I guess that'll be, question for you, Ron.
Right. Yeah, we had independent appraisal done that put into account all of those restrictions, and that was the value that was, come up with was $68,000, again, based on the restrictions.
Okay, and that's for both, both properties involved?
Correct.
Next question I saw on the new playground, it looks like it may go, does that, may cross over from the city into the town? Is that going to be, is that an issue, or is that just shaded into?
That's their new playground.
Okay, okay. Because it looked like it went over the boundary, so I wasn't sure if that was a, on the color part.
All of this is in the city.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The playground is an existing playground.
Okay.
That Groton Estates established. Right.
Okay, on that side, but I'm looking at the, where the, with number, number five.
Oh, wait.
I see a crossover. So I wasn't sure if he had that parcel as well, and that's...
No, no, no.
Okay.
Hold on. This is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. That 5 corresponds to that 5.
Okay.
That 5 just happens to be in Birch Plain Creek, but it is not part of Birch Plain Creek.
Okay.
This is, this is where this index is.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So 5 is up above, on the other side of Constitution Place.
That's correct.
Okay. So 5 has just happened to be printed in here. So, I mean, I know when we discussed this before, my concern was, one resident came, was about the children playing here.
Yep.
And so before it was proposed to have an area down here, coming around on Nathan Hale, that they would be playing in that area, so I guess that's been nixed, and keeping the existing playground. And I would like to say that I did ask how many children actually live in this place. In the last year, it was like, almost 150. It's a large amount of children. And I know they got a lot of signatures, but it doesn't represent all of the residents. So we didn't have, we don't have residents who actually said no. We never got a percentage on that, on who actually was against it and why. So, and for me, as a mother and a counselor and so forth and so on, to say that there's room to hear so forth and so on, I know the kids there, and they're played there, you know, I don't know if they're going to mosey on down here when I have, drove the bus down there, sometimes kids would play there, but I just get concerned about, I think it's a great idea as far as the walking, but I think about children playing down there and people walking through there. It's just a thing I, it's a, for me, it's, it's a risk, to me. So, I mean, everything's a risk, but it's high.
It's actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's actually, it's existing, it's just that it will get fixed up a bit. It's, it is an easy place for anybody to go. People walk their dogs there right now. It's, so I'm, I just wanted to, to point that out, that access to that area is existing.
It's currently used as passive recreation now.
And down there, well, I usually, I usually see when I've been down there, when I had a route there, they played up in this green here. Rarely are they down there, because I would drive down there and have them look at the osprey nests there. So would that stay there? The osprey nests that's there?
Yes.
Okay, so I just think about, so when you actually get out and walk the area, it's very close to the marsh.
Yep.
So that's why I think a lot of parents don't have their kids down that way, and up in this way. That's just the biggest thing that I had, is that we didn't know what the percentage was for those who were against it, we never told who it was, and that there's a large amount of children there. I mean, it's a small playground for a lot of kids. I don't, I've never, like, calculated what age is actually playing on the playground. I've seen children there, but, so those are just my points. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting on November 6th, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Oh, abstain, abstain.
You're going to abstain?
Oh.
Two abstains?
Thank you.
Okay, so the abstentions are Sheffield and Piazza. So that's 4, 402. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Leslie. The next item is Groton Public Schools Mentoring Program. Absolutely.
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Sharon Schick. I'm the district mentor coordinator for Groton Public Schools. And our Groton Public Schools mentoring program has been in place for, this is the 26th year. Last year, we hired a person that is the director of the mentoring program. And this year, we also hired another person that can help recruit and train the mentors. Does anybody know anything about the mentoring program at all? Have you heard about it before?
Yes.
So there is a distinction between the mentoring program and the tutoring program?
Yes, yes. The mentoring program is a half an hour week each week during the school year on school property, and it's a half an hour at the elementary level. It can go from a half an hour to 45 minutes at the middle school level, and it can be up to an hour due to block scheduling at the high school. We, currently, we have had about, between last year and this year, about 90 people have, in the process of becoming mentors, and about 75 of that have been placed with mentors, which is really cool, considering that due to COVID, we had worked our way down to only two mentors. And this is a self-esteem based approach. There are plenty of services that are for children that go to our schools, that have special needs programs, that have other services that, that they need. And we look at that, this is for students that might fall not in any one of those previous categories. They could be from single parent homes, they could be from double parent homes, they could be affluent neighborhood, they could be very, very poor neighborhood. They could have straight As, but the only reason why they have straight As is maybe they're tunnel visioned into, that's the only thing that makes them feel good, you know. We want to look at the whole child, and this is one of the really good ways that we go about it. Each one of the staff members have been trained by the State of Connecticut, Governor's Prevention Partnership. We go through a very intensive training. And then each one of our mentors are, go through a training that we hold once a month. The next training is going to be next Wednesday. They're, they're held over Zoom. If you go to grotonpublicschools.org/mentor, there's a quick signup sheet there, and then one of us, either myself, Jennifer Anthony, or Mrs. Sammons, one of us will get back in touch with you. And then you go through a background check, sign up like you're going to be, be an employee, but you're a mentor, and it's an unpaid position. And so far, we've, we've done pretty good with the matching process of it. It's like a dating service, you know? We have the information of the mentor, we have the information of the mentee, and we look at everything, and we've met them, and we, like, put them together, and hopefully everything works out perfectly fine. In a utopian society, if you're matched, like, in first grade, we want you to come back year after year after year, and you can follow your student all the way up through high school and all the way up through graduation. I myself am still a mentor to two of my mentees, they started in sixth grade, and now the one daughter, or the one has two daughters, and one of the daughters is one of my granddaughter's friends, which I didn't expect. She had a birthday party, and the girl shows up, and it's like, oh my goodness, that's my mentee's daughter. This is really weird. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty good. And then the other one is a, they both went to college, and they both wound up becoming paramedics, which is interesting, which, you know. So does anyone have any questions?
Any question from the council, Deputy Mayor Diawo?
So first, I want to say thank you for coming. I know I expressed this before with things that go on in the public schools, because we're not directly connected, sometimes it's hard to know what's, what's happening. So I appreciate you coming to, to talk about this, because it's, it's, I don't have any kids in the public school, so I'm not personally connected either. So it's really helpful for me when residents ask me questions, when people come to, to talk about these things. So the program, you said you have about 70...
70 active mentors, yes.
Do you have a goal? Like, is there, are you looking to have 100 or 150? Do you have like an annual goal of like...
We want to get back up to where we were, and we were at like 150, 160 people that were mentors. Over the course of the years, if you go down to Eastern Point, and you go to the Lighthouse, and you know that brick path?
Mm-hmm.
Well, when that brick path went in there, there are plenty of names that are mentors that are written there. We've had mentors, which is another thing, I would love to have one of you become a, a mentor. That would be absolutely terrific, because we've had Groton Utilities people be mentors, we've had the Police Department, Fire Department, Beach and Parks Department, you know, all from the city, because when we initially started, we were a pilot program within the city. It was Groton Heights, Colonel Ledgerd, Eastern Point Elementary fed into West Side Middle School, and then when our eighth graders were going to go up to the high school, I spent three hours with the principal at the high school and said, hey, you really need to do this up here. This would be really cool if you could continue. And we've got like, you know, three eighth graders that will be going up to ninth grade with their mentors if we can continue. And fortunately, he said yes, and that's how the high school got involved then. And then this particular school year, we're concentrating on getting more back into the high school, and so far, I think we have three active matches at the high school level for this school year.
So my other question was, so you said it's during school hours, so are the kids pulled out of a class?
The kids are pulled out of classes. The children need to make up whatever they miss, but we're of the opinion that if they're not engaged in the first place, they're not missing anything, and the teacher can devote time to other things while that student is being mentored. And the mentoring winds up building their self-esteem up, they want to be more engaged in school. The first thing, people go, how do you, how do you know that this is working? What's a quantitative thing? And that's the absenteeism. The absenteeism becomes less, because the, the first time, the students want to come for that mentoring day, because that person is giving their time. Which leads me to, this is one of the gifts that we gave this last school year for, to our mentors at the end of the year, because we give a, have a dinner every year, which is really nice, and it's usually the time where we have the mentors and the mentees and their families and the teachers and people from the community, and they all come, and it's a huge event. This year, we didn't, this last May, we didn't have the students, because it was the first time that we held the dinner in a long time. So we were just grateful to have the mentors there and the staff personnel. But I also brought you this that you can put up in the building, and it's got a QR code that you can look at, and then you can get that, and it goes to that site that I was talking about.
Perfect.
Which also explains a little bit about the program as well.
I just want to say, I think it's a great program, and thank you again for, for coming to explain it to us.
You're very welcome. As I said, if anybody wants to sign up, training is the first... As I said, if anybody wants to sign up, training is the first Wednesday of the month. It is around five thirty PM, and, uh, it's on Zoom. You go to the grottenpublicschools.org/mentor, sign up, and then one of us will get back in touch with you. And I hope to see one, if not all, of your names on our list.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you. Um, so is there a, uh, age that you want the mentor to be at least?
A mentor needs to be at least eighteen years old.
And up to, it doesn't matter what age?
It doesn't matter what age. We have a eighty-nine-year-old person that just decided to become a mentor.
Nice. Uh, and so is this something that's incorporated maybe in somebody's IEP or five oh four plan, or does it need to be in, in place, or is it just something that?
It is adjacent to. It does not need to be in the IEP or the five oh four plan. Those are, eh, as I said, we find out what services that, that the mentee can be referred through a PPT meeting, through a teacher, through the student themselves. And if it's the student themselves, then we go check around and find out why. You know, make sure it's a, a valid reason, not just to get out of class, you know, which some of them have been. Um, but most of the kids are just really happy to see what the other students are going through. And they enjoy that fact. Um, but we look, internally, we look and find out what services are already in place. And this does not take, not, this is adjacent to, this is not in place of any service that any student already receives. It enhances the program. And it, it gets the kids that may have otherwise fallen through a crack here or there, it makes sure that we get everybody, which is good.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Norris?
Thank you very much. Um, real quick question. So just wanted everyone to know, there is not a fee for this to the participant or the student at all?
Oh, no. It, this is a totally free program. Now, if you want to donate to the mentoring program to help pay for that dinner that we have at the end of the year, to help pay for the mentor gifts. Um, as a matter of fact, what we do is I try to get as much things by donation, Jennifer and I do to, you know, to try to get. Like, the other part of the gift besides the bag this year was we had beautiful flowers that were donated by the Salem Country Gardens. It's not called Salem now, but that one out there, they donated beautiful flower arrangements that everybody got, which was, which was really nice.
Right, thank you. Just in case some folks are interested in the program, just wanted them to know that there was no fee to them.
No, and there's no fee for the background check either.
Sure, but I also want to ask, do you have some type of partnership or collaboration with the youth service department or bureau over in the town also?
We used to. We used to have one with them. I'm, I'm going to try to talk to Grotton Utilities to see if they wouldn't mind partnering with us to help with some of those.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay? Thank you, Sharon, for coming out.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And thank you for what you do.
Happy good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Baker Cove discussion. Chief, if you and harbor master could come up, um, you guys can share the mic, but we'll need you both to have a place to sit. This is, uh, in response to citizens petitions, and then a meeting that I had with the chief and the harbor master uh, to initially discuss issues in Baker Cove, but also for a larger discussion of Marine Patrol and the city of Grotton. So with that, chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, yeah, on ten seventeen, uh, the harbor master, Jeff Seedzick, myself and the mayor met, uh, regarding, uh, Baker's Cove. Uh, and this is a two-part discussion, so we'll talk about Baker's Cove first. So the plans in place for that are that the, uh, no-wake buoy is to be installed west of the Pine Island Marina at the entrance to Baker's Cove. There are two no-wake signs to be installed on Pine Island that will cover the westerly entrance to Baker's Cove. Uh, plastic no-wake signs have been made available by DEEP for dock owners to place on their docks. But, uh, the harbor master and myself, the mayor, are a little concerned uh, based on the construction material, that they might not last or at least stand up to any kind of weather that we have. So, uh, the harbor master is looking into a metal signage as a possible substitute. The twenty twenty-four boaters, uh, we, we're going to meet with the twenty twenty-four boat owners in Baker's Cove. The greatest, uh, concentration is at the Elks. So that will, that's where we'll concentrate our, uh, our public meeting. And we're going to make sure that we have our twenty twenty-four safe boating manuals on hand, because we can distribute those. Those are put out by DEEP, but they do have their Baker's Cove restrictions, uh, listed in there. Jeff, you got anything on Baker's Cove?
Uh, pretty much covered it. It's been, uh, not enforced for numerous years, so some bad habits have happened, especially with twenty twenty. Uh, the COVID times, everybody went out and started boating. And as of recently, this summer, it's been promoted on social media as being the go-to place. So the activity of transient visitors has increased immensely, um, and has caused, uh, issues, uh, from non-enforcement. So we've been working, the harbor commission and myself have been working for, um, several years with DEEP, trying to get the permitting in place for these no-wake markers. And we finally have, uh, gotten that goal set. And as, uh, the chief said, they'll be installed for this coming season.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, so that's the Baker's Cove, uh, part of this. Uh, as far as the Marine Patrol, so this is the, the, uh, the general discussion and the work and discussion on, on what, uh, the residents brought forward last time. So just to give you a, uh, an update on where the Marine Patrol sits right now. So we do have staffing availability. We have three captains and six mates. It requires two people to run the boat at any time. So that gives us a total of three potential crews that we can rotate through, uh, with the captain and a mate being on each crew. These are ancillary assignments for us, meaning that they are part-time. This is not part of our regular duty. Uh, this is something that we pick up over the boating season, and, uh, we man the boat based on that. The schedule for the upcoming boating season will be starting on May twenty-fifth and run through September twenty-ninth. Uh, it'll be mostly Saturday and Sunday patrols for four hours a day. There'll be a concentration on afternoon hours, because that's the return time when the, uh, the boaters tend to come in and, and cause the most problems for us as far as waking is concerned. So we're looking either at twelve to four or one to five PM. That gives us thirty-six shifts total that we have to cover, eighteen weekends at two days each. And we're going to require two crew for each shift. So what does that look like as far as funding is concerned? So based on that, that's a hundred and forty-four hours each, times two crew is two hundred and eighty-eight hours. We have a fuel cost. Uh, we figured, we, uh, pulled out one of our recent receipts from a few weeks ago. And for an eight-hour patrol, that costs is two hundred and forty-six dollars. So if we run that over eighteen weekends, and we're running eight hours a weekend, that's four thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars in fuel. The crew costs two hundred and eighty-eight hours, we're averaging about sixty-three dollars an hour. That's going to be eighteen thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. So if we add those two together for the twenty twenty-four boating season, the total cost will be twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Now, our budget breaks up the boating season. So there are five weekends in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, which is the existing one we're in right now. And there are thirteen weekends in the new budget, which is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So the funding for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, which is not in place right now, is a, is a roughly twelve hundred and thirty dollars in fuel and five thousand forty dollars in salary for a net of six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. For grants, uh, we have, and, and the harbor master sits on the, um, marine, uh, the marine safety group for this area. So we're fortunate in that. But we are going to be looking at grants, uh, this year, because our, our vessel does need some upgrades in electronics and repowering. We're going to be looking at two outboard motors. Um, the retail cost of those is about twenty-one thousand dollars apiece. And, uh, so for a total of forty-two, but the harbor master assures me we can get a better price than that, right? Okay, cool. Uh, and then our electronics, you know, we need a transducer, which is our depth finder. Uh, we need a flare, which is a thermal or forward-looking infrared. Uh, we need a spotlight, uh, a remote spotlight, and then AIS. AIS is in, advanced information system. Uh, the reason why we're going to put that on the boat is because the Coast Guard can actually program our search patterns to do. We don't have to call out for it, and it'll show us automatically where to go uh, for search and rescue type missions. So if we look at a fifty-seven thousand dollar cost for the grants, if it's a twenty-five percent match this year, then that would be an additional fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And if it's that, if it's a ten percent match, then we're looking at five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Some of the area existing Marine Patrols that are here in the area that do the same thing that we're looking to do. The Waterford, uh, Marine Unit, eh, well, it's Waterford East Line. They have, uh, Waterford puts aside twenty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars for their twenty twenty-four budget. Stonington puts aside twenty-four thousand dollars for their twenty twenty-four budget. And the town of Grotton does not operate with a separate, uh, Marine Patrol budget, but they do take their overtime from, uh, they, they pay their Marine Patrols from their overtime budget, and they do average eight hours, uh, shift for each weekend. And that's about it for what I have, so, any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, mayor. Um, first, I want to say thank you for this very thorough breakdown of the cost. Um, because I feel like some of these items, um, could have been, for example, fuel. Some might think, oh, that's negligible, whatever. But it's obviously important to know the total cost of what it's, what it's going to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is, so I have a couple of questions. So you said that it's part-time, but how does it affect staffing levels overall? Because I, I know, you know, we have a certain number of officers that we have, that number is based on how many we need on the road. So does this affect our staffing levels on the road or otherwise?
So, I mean, we're going to shuffle people around. So luckily, the three captains are supervisors, so not all three supervisors are going to be working the same shift all the time. So even if we require a road supervisor, it means that the other two captains would be available. And then we have enough mates to pull from, they're not all on one shift, thank goodness. So we can pull them from different shifts, or we can pull in people on days off to work this. What haven't, hasn't been done in the past is we haven't put this out as a summer schedule from May to, to September. We're going to do that this time. So we're going to have four months of scheduling where we'll have to sign up ahead of time.
So then, how will that affect overtime, your overtime?
We're going to pay, it's all overtime. This is a hundred percent overtime.
Okay, so you're planning on it just being all?
Yes, ma'am, because that's the only way reasonably, I think, that we can fill it with just having the twenty-nine officers, uh, and, and having to pull people in to work this. We're going to have to pay the overtime on it.
And then, um, when you do the budget for next year, is your plan to try to incorporate this minus whatever grants maybe we can receive on top of what your budget plan was already? Or are you going to try to cut somewhere else to fit this into the budget?
So I don't think it's possible to cut. Uh, and mayor and I have talked, we are very close on our line items, and that's, that doesn't take into any consideration as far as material expenses that have occurred this year, thanks to COVID, which are, are passed on to us, and we're having to purchase items at an increased price that we didn't plan for last year. Um, we, we planned to purchase the item, it, but the, the price is a lot more than we planned on. We are, it, it is, I mean, I, I would say if we, if we have a one percent over on each item, we'll be lucky on that. Uh, and I don't think we're there at all. It's just, we're very tight on materials, and as you're aware, you know, personnel is the main cost for us. It runs about eighty-seven percent. So we only have about thirteen percent anyway, and that, all that money is already spoken for.
And then, so with that, how do you feel? Because our budget has to get approved by the town.
Yes.
How do you feel that this increase is going to be received by the town, considering we are also planning on adding a social worker into the budget next year? Um, so do you know about how much your budget is going to be increased for the next budget?
At least forty thousand, I would say, for this, if we go for the, uh, grant increase as well, because we're going to need that twenty-five percent match. Otherwise, where are we going to get that from? Okay? Uh, and then the social worker, the mayor and I have talked, so, haven't, and this is an aside, but having done the social worker, uh, before, the CIT before, then I would recommend that we go a little bit of a different route and look at, uh, contracting those services. But that's for a different discussion.
Okay, so, but, and I know you haven't had to defend your, um, budget for years for the town, so it's, you know, the, the process is relatively new, but, um, how, um, I guess, I mean, this isn't really, it's kind of a rhetorical question, I guess, but, um, are you prepared to fight to include this in the budget? Because I, I think that you may have to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, so, eh, so, first of all, it's what the residents are asking for, right? So if the residents weren't supportive of this, then I would say that my fight is not going to be as effective as it could be. Um, obviously, as we get closer to the budget time, I would expect that, uh, our residents will show again to voice their support on this. Uh, besides that, you know, do we have water tragedies that have occurred in Connecticut this year in, in southeastern Connecticut? Yes. Um, we just answered a call today, actually, for a canine in the water that fell off a dock. Uh, so we're, you know, we're doing that kind of rescue still. Um, as far as waterborne, two weeks ago, we were over in London, uh, assisting them on a search of waters for evidence. The reason why is because we're the only ones in the area that have that capability. Uh, you have to go to Willimantic to find the next group of people that can do that. Is that something that we're willing to give up? You know, that, that's, at the end of the day, it's council's decision, and then it's town council's decision. Um, but at least that way, we have an explanation as to, or the residents do as well, as to whether or not this council or town council supports this type of activity.
And I just want to say, I am, um, supportive of this. I think this cost is reasonable for, um, what we need. It is a safety issue. Um, I also think for our police department, it is another service that we offer. And from at least the little bit that I've heard, it's another kind of task or, um, like certification that our officers can add that makes their job more interesting, which I think makes it easier to keep officers when your job stays interesting. So, um, I think all around, this is a really good idea, and, uh, thank you again for all the detail in this presentation.
Any other question or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you. With that said, so, uh, those who are trained, are you looking in the future to train other officers, um, to be boatmates or?
Yeah, so.
Keep it, keep it where it's at.
No, no, no. I, I think that we have to run a three-crew minimum anyway, as far as, uh, having availability is concerned. The issue is that some people just aren't comfortable underwater. Some of us don't swim, I do, but some of my officers don't swim. Um, so it, it, I don't have a hundred percent participation just on, on fear of the water, um, and, and not being comfortable in it. But you do have to be very competent in handling these vessels. And the reason why is because this is not just pleasure craft out there, uh, you know, tooling around on, on, in the water. We have to actually go out, we have to know how to get on, up close to other vessels, so we practice boarding. And then, you know, one of the most critical tasks that we have to do is search and rescue. And the reason why we have to do search and rescue is because if you talk to the Coast Guard right now, at any time, they only have one rescue boat available, and that's it for their staffing. So is it necessary, unfortunately, is it necessary for towns municipalities, uh, to pick up, uh, these duties? I, I think it is.
Well, with that said, I was going to ask, when you say residents are in support of this, are we talking specifically residents in the Baker Cove area? Um, if not, um, is there an association in Baker Cove that would be, their fees cover part of this or not at all?
Well, it, this is municipal funding, right? So I don't know if you can ask for private funding to cover municipal funding. Right, I don't think you can do that, so.
Thank you.
So another thing that we're doing is we're offering swimming lessons to our police officers, uh, to get them more comfortable in the water, uh, so that, uh, we can expand our roles here.
So we're doing water safety. I have Mary, uh, getting us the Avery Point pool, so I can put my officers in at the shallow end uh, and, and talk about some water rescue techniques.
So we have a relationship, uh, actually have an MOU between UConn Avery Point and us with the fields and the pool. So we already have, uh, have that in place. So, Councilor Carter? So, Councilor Carter?
Um, a couple of things. And you do bring a good point, you know, it is the city, but it is a portion of the city that doesn't affect, you know? But just like the social worker that's brought, you know, there's some people in the city that don't need the social worker as well or may not need the social worker as immense as different populations within the city, right? So I do think if you do have those to move forward, if the town is like, well, you know what, you want this and this, you know, kind of pick one type of deal, that is a bigger discussion. And if that becomes an issue where it's like, okay, you have residents that are giving a little kickback on the patrol services, you know, that could potentially be a possibility to ask residents down there what they can do. I mean, I know they do it with Grand Long Point, they're about to take away the police and then Grand Long Point, they, the citizens stepped up, you know? So I guess that's how bad you want it. My other thing is, and this is just from being on the job, I can see, I can see a portion that's been really good as far as monetary standpoint, especially for cops, right? But I can also see the officer that wants nothing to do with it and who potentially could get ordered in, you know, based off department needs because we have boaters in the water, right? Have you given any thought, is this going to be a voluntary thing? Or is this a patrol, is the department needs, you know, this is, we man the general patrols first, right? Make sure we have everybody on board and then kind of like, have you given any thought to what that, I know there's orders, there's orders at every department, right? You know, and particularly in the summertime when people book off or just don't want to come to work or they want to go boating in Cape Cod somewhere with their own boat, right? I could see, I could see that potentially being an issue, you know?
Yeah.
Do you see any problems with the, we don't got to talk about the unions.
So, I mean, we order on a daily basis now for patrol, right? So this is going to be voluntary and the reason why it's voluntary, again, we go back to competency, right? I can't put somebody on the boat that it's their first day, they don't know what they're doing. Mates have a job to do, whether that's tying off, fendering, boarding, being a lookout for us, snagging things from the water with a hook, so that, or moving debris, catching debris. The captain's in charge of the vessel, the captain has to control the vessel. So the mate is an integral part of that crew in the fact that they do have to know what they're doing when it comes to a boat. If I turn him, if I tell him it's Port Starboard, you know, bow or stern, they have to know what that is as opposed to left, right, front and back, you know? So some of that nautical terminology, if I'm talking about red and green lights, they have to know what side the red and green lights are on as far as navigation is concerned. They have to know what I'm talking about when I talk about red and green cans or navigable waters or channels. And then we go into the 15 statutes, which is all the boating statutes. You have to be intimately familiar with those in order to go out and do enforcement, like the Harvard Master was saying. Part of this need is the fact that we've missed the enforcement from COVID going forward, right? So we need to get back out there again because there are an increase in the boating complaints that have come in.
So, 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 but in one, it doesn't need to be a drawn out thing, because some people may not understand what I'm trying to say. So I'm on patrol, right, and working the shift, right? And there is somebody else that maybe had off that day or chose to pick this shift to boat, right? And you need somebody to work second shift, right? Am I getting ordered in for an extended shift or do I have to work because of that person's on the boat, you know? And I'm just on patrol working, like, on the road, that would be, that'd be an issue, you know, just because, like, all right, why is he not getting ordered in? Because maybe he can't work a double because he already worked during the day.
Yeah, so I'm not going to take him off the, so I'm not going to take him off shift to put him on a boat and then leave a gap where somebody else is going to have to come and fill it. So this is going to be taken from the outside, from the available pooling. Because the way we do overtime anyway, orders in, is you have to have the front and back shift of that, so then we split them four and four. So you have to be working anyway, so it can't affect your days off. Okay, so this will be the days off, right?
Any other questions or comments, Councilor Norris?
Thank you. It's a perfect example of responsiveness, working out the details, not burying it in the sand and coming in with a budget, so I appreciate that. Real quick, so when you say this season or the season, so we're saying moving forward, the season will always be May through end of September?
That's when the heaviest boating traffic is, sir, so that's when we tend to go. Well, that's what we usually call our boating season.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I also just wanted to highlight, because I've been hearing this and you and I spoke about this. This is not a Baker's Cove issue.
No, it is not.
That dog wasn't on Baker's Cove.
No, it was not.
It's a coastal issue, it's a grand city issue, it's a safety issue. Anyone can fall in that water and get hurt.
Correct.
Anyone can go to the beach and if there's not a lifeguard present, they're calling you. Regardless, they're calling you anyway, even if there is.
Yeah, and then we haven't even, you know, discussed homeland security concerns. You know, if we have another event or incident in the United States and all of a sudden the threat levels go up, then, you know, part of our tasking now becomes the protection of the strategic targets, which are the 26 of them listed within New London County. And we have several of those here in the city.
So again, thank you very much for taking the initiative, taking what people are asking for and actually putting something thought and pen and paper together. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that was informing, so Jeff, thank you. Chief, stay where you're at.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to add police department vehicle purchase to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Chief, talk about your vehicles and the vehicle purchase, did you? It's, this is being added, there was nothing in your packet because this shift's got brought up Friday and today. Chief, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So we have funding from the town that we get for vehicles every year, well, not every year, but this year it was, it was it was a substantial amount that they afforded us. And I started looking at what our fleet replacement needs were based on the conditions of our vehicles. So just going around and doing a visual inspection, I picked the four worst vehicles that we had. And by worst, I mean that they're actually rusting through on the fenders and or wheel wells. And that these are 2008 vehicles with high mileage. So these are unmarked, these are not patrol vehicles. And as such, I'm not looking for patrol related type capabilities for these. These would go to the detectives. But I am looking to replace them and to make the money go further, we did start to look at a lease program originally. And then for some financial, through some financial discussions on that, it was decided that that wasn't maybe the best route to go because we'd ended by paying about a 7% surcharge over the top of the price of the cars. But we could self-finance those four vehicles. And because we weren't looking at, at police rated vehicles, we were looking at SUVs, not SUVs, oil drive because of safety factors. We could get them for a lesser price. So that was the first thing. The second thing is I started to look at the repair costs. So in any fleet management program, you look at what the repairs offer your vehicles versus then what your value is. Because the value is, you know, we'll turn around and we'll auction them, we'll get some money back, we'll put it back in the general fund. But how much are we actually making on these? Some of these vehicles came in on a Kelley Blue Book at $698 total value, that's it, okay? But over the last couple of years, we've spent $7,500 on repairs. So I have four vehicles worth $698 and I've spent $7,000 on repairs. That doesn't make any sense. I need to unload these vehicles to auction and replace them with vehicles now that my maintenance cost goes down. So that brings that line item down. The other thing is we're going to go by the national standard, right? So the national standard for police vehicle replacement is three years for patrol, four to five years for administrative and six to seven years for your support services, which is me and the captain. And that's all based on mileage, right? Your patrol vehicles are out there every day, they're running eight hours a day, 16 hours a day, they're getting the highest mileage. The next ones out there are the detectives or the unmarks because they do get day-to-day activity, but not as many miles. And then the other, the last ones are mine, the captains, the lieutenants, because we're not running them that many miles, we're not running them every day like that. So we have not adhered to any of those standards. And so we're creating this fleet management program now within the police department. But I think the first step is we get rid of these only because of the cost of the repair that we're looking at versus actually what the, what the value of the vehicles is. And that's it.
I have lots of questions, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
In advance. Okay, so how many total cars do we have?
So we have 11 unmarked and we have nine marked.
That seems backwards.
I know. Well, the other thing we're looking at is fleet needs as well, but that's a later discussion, so.
Is this all of our running vehicles?
So one of our vehicles is not run, it's getting a replacement engine. It's been sitting for over a year waiting for an engine to come in.
And do we have any other vehicles that we've already set to go to auction that have not gone to auction yet?
They are at auction right now and, well, not at auction, but they're sitting there waiting to go.
And when, because I feel like we talk about sending things to auction, but sometimes it takes a while to get them, which I know is a process. I just, so.
It's currently in the process, we're working with GovDeals, pictures of the vehicles have all been taken, we're just finalizing descriptions in order to get those posted.
So how long do you think until we get those out of our possession?
I'm hoping by the end of November.
And then, so these four vehicles that we're going to replace will then go to auction also, right?
If, if they are ready to go for auction, we can get them in for auction. But yeah, that's where they will go because the trade-in value is probably not going to be significant either.
And then, so if, how long do you expect that cycle to take for these four vehicles that are going to be new into the, you know, kind of pipeline of getting them offloaded?
It would be dependent, again, if they're being, currently being used or not being used in rotation. Because I believe there is an order time of roughly two months was what they said for the new.
Correct, so these are going off of Northwest, which is the state bid. So right now, these, so every vehicle that we have is being used right now. We are not, we don't have surplus vehicles per se. We may be able to double up on some of our unmarked, but that's, again, that's something else that we're still working on. But I give you, so the oldest vehicle, I was wrong, so the oldest vehicle I'm replacing is a 2006 Taurus. And then three of them are 2008 Toruses. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking to send to auction right now as soon as the new vehicles come in. But we're probably talking about March, even if we ordered them today.
Okay, so then that will be next year, we'll go to auction those four vehicles. And so you said we have 11 unmarked cars, how many staff do we have that drives that group of vehicles, the 11 unmarked?
So there's the three admin supervisors, so myself, the captain lieutenant, then there's four detectives, including the youth officers, so that's seven. The training sergeant has one, the blight officer uses one. There's one that's an administrative vehicle for officers that are going to training so they don't have to take a marked vehicle. I think that's 11, right?
I think that's 10.
Okay, I'm missing one.
So that is, so, okay. So this, the cost for these vehicles that you want to purchase, we already have that money in the budget from the town?
No.
Where is that money coming from?
We're going to take it from capital. And then replace what we do have into capital.
So we currently have money in the capital budget from previous years from the town in our capital budget that we're going to use for this?
No, we're going to, what we're going to do is we're going to self-lease them to ourselves. We have money in the capital reserve account that we've been putting away over the last few years, especially with the building permit stuff coming in. If you remember, we've put that undesignated capital aside there. What will happen is it'll be budgeted for going forward and the police budget will pay back those borrowed funds essentially from ourselves over the next five years. Instead of leasing it with a third party, we're just going to internally finance it.
Okay, so we are going to use general fund monies from city taxpayers to, because we need these cars now? And that will be reimbursed from the town tax base over the next five years, is that what you're saying?
Right, this money is actually sitting in the capital reserve fund, so it's not, it's outside of the general fund, it's in another fund, which is that reserve for capital purchases.
But from city taxpayers.
Correct, from, from city funding.
But we, so it's going to be in the budget, though. We're not going to add this on top of it, because we're already increasing our budget request from the town. We already have plans to increase it, you know, 40,000 or whatever it's going to be. So this money, we are certain, is going to come out of future money that the town pays for our police department.
So if you look at the pattern of the town's financing for us for vehicles, it's been 70, 40, 70, 40, it's a wave type. So if we put 70 in now and this is 101,000, then that means that 40 next year that we expect will cover the rest of our funding.
Okay.
Because we have $70,000 right now.
From the town?
Correct, for this year's purchase.
Okay, so this amount, we're only really borrowing, essentially kind of borrowing from city taxpayer funds, 40,000, which we expect to be reimbursed next year.
If they follow the same pattern that they've been following.
What if they don't?
Then we're out the $30,000.
Not that I think they will, because if that's the pattern, I, generally that is what will happen. But back to our previous discussion, I think that we may have an issue where they might say, well, you already spent the money. So what if we take that out of your budget? Because now you're requesting money for a social worker and marine patrol. So you don't need this money for the cars, instead of giving it to you for the cars, we're going to give it to you for, for that, in which case we're out $40,000, right?
Or we're out four cars, because either way, these things are breaking. So we have to get them replaced. That's what it boils down, I had, like I said, I've got one vehicle, it was sitting for over a year, didn't run. And it's only now that it's, that it's got an engine that's coming into it, so.
So my last question, I'm not, I'm not challenging this because I'm supportive of it, I'm just dropping some food for thought because I have been through several budget sessions with the town and I know.
So I have to be able to have frank conversations with the council, that's exactly what I'm going to ask them. So what would you like me to take off the road so we don't provide services for these people that are out here in the city? And you tell me that, not you as this council, but the town council. Because I'm going to make them tell me, as well as the audience, what they would like to reduce as far as public safety is concerned. And that's how it's going to be.
My very last question, I think. So your fleet management plan, have you worked out if that will fit into our current budget or how much that, so?
No, no.
Do you have a, an idea of how much that will increase the budget or a plan for gradual increase of the budget or what is your plan on that?
So I don't think we're going to go after, and this is very preliminary, and just a preliminary conversation between myself and the mayor. I don't think we're going to go after purpose-built police cars anymore because they're so expensive. And in the state of Connecticut, pursuit, because they call them PPVs, pursuit-rated vehicles, right? So we can't do that anyway anymore. So then why am I paying for the extra heavy-duty alternator, braking, suspension, steering, et cetera? It's probably easier for me to find all-wheel-drive or four-wheel-drive vehicles at a lower cost than these Ford Explorers, Dodges, Chevys, et cetera. We may get one or two specialized ones, but we're not going to fleet-wide, preliminary, we're not going to fleet-wide specialty the rest of the fleet. Because, and so you're asking about price reductions? Yes, that would be my gradual price reduction, but at the same time, car prices, they're going to go up. We already know, giving an example, the Tahoe, the police Tahoe is supposed, is projected to go over $100,000 for next year, per vehicle. So who can afford that, you know? But we're going to go out and buy Priuses. Plug them all in. Now, we'll have to look at a fleet, we'll have to look at something that everybody's, you know, the vehicle's acceptable to counsel. Like, we still have to fit a lot of our utility stuff, I mean, cops carry a lot of things, right? It still has to have the electronics that can support our lighting and our radio system, et cetera. But I think the days of us, you know, purely looking at pursuit-rated vehicles is over.
And do you see that as a trend in other departments?
No, I think we're going to set the trend here. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sheffield?
To follow up on the price, what was, your, be your best estimate of how much those four vehicles will cost? As far as, you know, are you looking at brand new or are you looking at a U? what was your, your, be your best estimate of how much those four vehicles will cost as far as, you know, are you looking at brand-new or are you looking at a used vehicle that?
Yeah, no, I'm looking at brand-new because I get the, the biggest bang for the buck, right? Because I get the thirty-six-thousand-mile warranty right off the bat, which is really what I'm, and like I said, you know, I'm replacing an engine now. It's going to cost me seven thousand dollars. I don't want to spend that seven thousand dollars on engines. You know, so if I can get a three-year warranty out of it, thirty-six, if I can get a fifty thousand warranty out of it, then, you know, that's going to save us some money as far as maintenance is concerned. This is going to be just over a hundred thousand. I think that's what I give you. So, and again, we're buying state bid, which is a ten percent lower pricing anyway. So, yeah, it should be right, right around, just over a hundred.
Is there a possibility of ARPA money to be able to fund that if, in case there is a budgetary problem?
If we have any money left over?
Okay.
But I don't know that we're gonna have any money left over.
Just a thought.
I don't know if we could use ARPA money for that or not. We'll have to look at the final ruling.
It, it would have been eligible, but we've already designated all of that and I don't foresee those projects coming in under, with the, with the exception of a couple.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
Thank you again, setting a tone. I do know, I'm glad to hear that there's a vehicle replacement program, but the difficult part is if you don't keep up with it, then it's hard catching up. And especially if we have vehicles, four of them, that are pushing twenty, twenty-five years old, makes a tough order. But I, I also have to commend you in having the tough conversation with the mayor and bringing it to council, because there are times we just have to ask and then say, what happens? And not only do we need to ask, we gotta have a backup plan, of which you, sounds like you got two or three. So I appreciate that also. But yeah, absolutely, and I, I truly hope the entire city is following through on their vehicle replacement program, because all it takes is two years of neglect and you're five years behind. So, thank you.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, just, I was gonna say anything, but I, um, I've always found over the years, especially when having conversations with the, um, um, the police chief, but also the, the fire chief and any emergency services as well, you know? I, I, I look at it as like, all right, what you're bringing to us, I mean, it makes sense, and especially if anything regarding safety and things that we need, I mean, to, to me, it's just a no-brainer. If we need it, get it, right? And, um, I, 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 I'm glad that you, you, you said what you said. It's like, it, I mean, what do you want me to do? You know, we need it, you know? You have officers, you have firefighters, you have, you have, that need apparatus that work, right, that aren't going to fail. It's safety, you know? So I'm, I, I'm glad you added that in there, because that's what, what Counselor Norris says, that, that's what we need, you know? I think with the, you know, we have the several different, um, old vehicles out there. I mean, that, that's because we're not getting any new ones, you know? So, um, it, it's, it's, it's big time right there that, that you said that, you know?
Appreciate that.
I think we need to hold people accountable, like what, what do you want me to do?
All any is a yes or no.
There's certain things that are, that are, no, well, with anything, I mean, that, that you can bring down to anybody's life, anybody's life, you know? There's, there's necessities that, that, there's, there's, there's needs and there's things that you would want, you know? This, these are things that we need. So it's no brainer. We have to find the money to figure out how, how to get them if we, if we don't have the money. And so I appreciate that.
Alright, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting, November sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Alright, the, thank you, Chief. Alright, the next item, finance, uh, city and G U finance, financials, I'm going to move to a future meeting due to the amount of items that we have in the lateness of the hour. So Ron will give that at a future meeting, either a Cal or at the next mayor and council meeting. Okay, the next one is public works bill. So public works director, Bill Robarge, will be discussing the Pine Island engineering and the city works phase three.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First thing that I have is, I'm here to request approval for the award to Beta for the culvert replacement down on Pine Island, Pine Island Road. The value for the cost is ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Backup to that story is down on Jupiter Point, Pine Island Road, there's a stormwater culvert that goes underneath Pine Island Road. One of the pipes has failed and the two head walls on the end are also failing. It's been like that for a little while. I need that pipe and that drainage system to take storm water from the roads and from the bank embankment to an outfall that is out by the boat launch, Bayberry Lane Boat Launch. The outfall is right there. I had the bids, I went out to bid, I have three bids. Beta's, I think is the best call for us. I was down there for the walk-down, felt very confident with what they had. One of the other things that we have going on down there is it's a lowland down there. So when I have a high-high tide, full moon combination, what happens is the water from the sound will backwash out onto the road. So in the design, we are looking to incorporate a flapper valve or a check valve. So Beta's done some of that work and we've done some of those, well, they've done some of those down south, New Haven, along the coast, and I felt very confident in going in with them. I have a hundred thousand dollars in the capital budget for this current year and I'm looking to utilize that money for that.
Questions, questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is there a reason that you didn't include the bids in our packet?
Oh, I should have. I have the three of them. If you'd like the values, right here.
Provide, provide that information and I'll send it council, I'll send it to you in the next couple of days.
Can do.
Um, can, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Actually, I have a note. I'm gonna set, get the resolution and the quote for the police vehicles as well. We can send them out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Can you possibly just give the number, the bottom-line numbers?
Absolutely. So I have three bids. The first one was for, from SLR. Again, I have a hundred thousand dollars to work with. The first bid from SLR was a hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred, so it exceeded the bid or the, the money that I have. The second one was for Beta, and that's ninety-nine thousand, five hundred, and the low bid was through B and L, which was ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and four. So there's a variance of about a thousand dollars. And again, I spoke to Beta. I felt more confident in going with them, with their experience, that they've been working on this stuff and everything else.
I, I would have more questions if I had the bids, I think. So with these numbers, are you saying that the work proposed was not going to be exactly the same? Like does Ba, Beta would provide a better product, end result?
I utilize.
Different product or what is?
I determined the, I wished to go with Beta because they had the experience on working on these types of things, especially with the flapper valve or the, the check valve. And they're using, you know, they're, they're working down south, like I said, in New Haven-ish, on the same type of thing. They sent an engineer that was on the walk-down. I felt very confident with him, much experience doing these types of things. He also talked about, Beta also talked about doing some probing beneath, beneath the, the culvert. So to look what we have for soil, are there any obstructions down below that that are going to be unforeseen costs, where the other two organizations did not talk to doing that at all. So I felt much more confident going with Beta.
Okay, thank you.
You're most welcome.
Other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting in November sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. City Works three, phase three?
Yes, and thank you. So the next piece is for City Works or Trimble. This is, we rolled out Trimble and City Works last year. We did the stormwater plan. We're also utilizing Grot utilities, is utilizing them for fleet management, a few other projects as well. This year, we put money in the budget to incorporate the roads and streets model to it. So that will include, that will provide us with the ability to capture all of the work that we do on roads and streets. So asset management, we'll be able to track history and cost, the works that we do. We'll be able to schedule corrective preventative maintenance work orders that we do, track labor. And then we'll also get into something that I've been looking forward to doing, that's planning and scheduling work. So ideally, we have work packets that push us out, you know, two to three weeks' worth of work. The foreman on the job can pick and choose on availability for resources or the jobs. It's just, it's just a much more efficient way to do work. This particular model will allow us to do all of that. So we'll also be able to have reporting tools and, and also this, this bundle comes with the training for everybody as well. Any questions?
Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of November sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief? So this is for vehicle purchase, but this is another one that we did not provide you backup on. Chief, I'll let you explain that.
Well, I do have here now. Sorry, I should know that. Uh, good evening. I do have the vehicle we're looking to purchase. It's on state bid, so the price is, you know, is already set. And it is almost identical to the two vehicles that we bought last year that we received this year. The base price is exactly the same. Again, set by state. And it's a little different with the packets. So like I said, the base price is exactly the same. It's the, the little extras. We did not spec this vehicle out. It is on lot, which is part of the reason I'm coming before you today. So if you remember from last time, we used to run two engines and a ladder truck as a primary response. And since that operation, we've changed and we run an engine and a ladder truck. And then we run two vehicles. So what we do is if it's a medical call, we'll run one person in one vehicle from company one and one person in one vehicle from company two. And what that does for us is a couple of things. One, if we have a fire call or an accident, something of that nature, two people will go on the engine and two on the ladder truck. It's safer when we're responding and the two firefighters can discuss what they're going to do, what they're going into, things of that nature. It also, it, it reduces our fleet. We used to have two engines, a ladder truck and a spare engine. We now have an engine, a ladder truck and a spare engine. But we have now picked up with the vehicle, so we have more small vehicles than we used to. Currently, we have a chief's car, a deputy chief's car, two response vehicles. And that's, that's it. One of the response vehicles is a pickup truck that is two thousand and five. It only has fifty-five thousand miles, but it, again, it's a two thousand and five. We've replaced the body on it once with the old chief's car that we, that we got rid of. And it's, you know, it's older. We like to use it for plowing. We would like to move it back into reserve so that we can continue to use it for plowing and, and keep it for a while longer before we have to replace that. So this vehicle would take the place of that vehicle and be a, a frontline response vehicle. We have, we just bought two. One was to replace my car. The other one was to replace the vehicle at company one, which was a used police vehicle that we got years ago. So we used to get used vehicles for staff cars and things of that nature. So currently, we have a chief's car, deputy chief's car, a, a brand-new response vehicle, and then this pickup truck, which is two thousand and five. We have no staff vehicle because the response vehicle that we just replaced and my vehicle both have mechanical issues and, much like the police chief. My vehicle is, you know, just brought in and they said, they recommend it replacing the engine, which we obviously are not going to do for a staff vehicle, but I have no staff vehicle now. So when I have my new captain going to fire marshal class right now, you don't have to pay a mileage because that's contractual. So by replacing G twenty-six, the pickup truck, we'll be able to move that into the position it used to be in, which is be able to be used for plowing, running around. And we also could use that for training to send staff because it wouldn't be a frontline piece. So, so again, in front of you is the price, it is on lot right now in the state. There aren't many. This one is red. It's not quite the same red we have, but they have, I think, half a dozen. Most of them are black. I think one white one, and then they have this red one that they're holding for us. After that, it would be ordering a new vehicle on the state bid. Part of the reason that I did not have the paperwork to you, because we were in discussion with them. So the new Tahoe, the new model year Tahoe will be fifty thousand dollars. It'll be ten thousand dollars more. And they had told us that verbally, but we were waiting for it in writing. It did come in. They are not taking the orders right now because of the strike. And then when they do take the orders, if you remember last time, it was a year before, because you're taking orders, they haven't built them yet. They, they build them in lots in the future and it's luck of the draw of when you get picked. Last time, it was, it was a year. We were going to be waiting. So I don't want, I don't think we can afford to wait that long. We need the vehicle now. And it does, it would come out of capital, which we have money set aside in the capital for new vehicles. Again, in changing our operation, we used to try and put money aside to replace two engines and a ladder truck and then the smaller vehicles. But now we'll be replacing an engine and a ladder truck. But the small vehicle fleet will, has grown by a couple of vehicles. With that in mind, though, this is forty thousand dollars and a new engine is currently running about eight hundred thousand dollars. So net gain in the end.
Okay, questions or comments from the council? Counselor Norris?
Thank you for thinking this through. One question. Do you have what you need?
That's a loaded question. For the vehicle, you mean, or just in general? You, you are and the mayor are very supportive and, you know, as we have needs, if they, you know, arise that were unforeseen, then we come to the mayor. Otherwise, we, we try and budget it out, you know, working with the mayor and Ron and, and anticipate, you know, moving forward. So this is, like I said, two things, an operational change and also COVID put everybody and everything behind the eight ball and trying to get in, you know, things that you need. It, it, it costs more and it takes a lot longer. So.
Thank you. So then question, mayor, finance. Is there one location, one booklet document that lays out all vehicle replacement, replacement plans universally?
No.
Okay.
And the question is, why is that? And the Ron, the finance director and I have talked about that typically what I've done is I let the individual departments manage their departments because the department needs for the police, department needs for the fire, department needs for public works, because those are our largest fleets in the municipality. Then you have the utilities. And the utility has its own management plan. So the department heads have their own, own fleet management plan, but it's not incorporated into, into one major thing that drives a capital plan down the road. So I expect the department, the fire department and then the police chief to manage their fleet and then let me know, because there's each. let me know, because there's each individual budgets. And then the overall impact from individual budgets impact the overall tax base.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, mayor. So you said it's come out of capital. So what percentage of the capital are you seeing that is gonna, and do you foresee anything making a dent in the capital of what you would have left? I'm sure you probably already thought about it, that you could possibly foresee, but I just wanted to know.
Well, our capital, if, if we put in every year what we needed to, to replace our vehicles in cash, it, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And when that's not done for, you know, whatever reason, economic times, a lot of times, capital gets cut, you know, it would be astronomical. We, we, the city, the mayor's budget, you, you've approved it over the last, I'm not, you know, four or more years, we've been putting in, I think, $200,000 the last two years towards it. So it's hard, you know, it's, there are certain things that, over the last four years, $10,000 of the capital fund every year went in specifically to replace our Scott Airpack bottles. They're due this year. I'll come to you later in the year to have those replaced because they're end of life. So that was a smaller, more specific. The larger trucks are, are a number that is almost unattainable, but we've been making a very big dent in it. So when it comes time to replace those trucks, we will probably have an option of buying one, maybe having, you know, bond one. It, it'll all depend on when we have to replace them exactly, and, and the cost, because the cost has gone up significantly. But on the small vehicles, we do also, part of that lump sum that goes in is to replace the chief's car, the deputy chief's car, and now these vehicles, you know, in, in a much sooner ti, you know, shorter period, like the police chief said, you know, we're looking at a five-year replacement, you know, for the chief's cars. Then we move one to reserve, you know, if it's still running okay without spending too much money, we'll keep that to use for a staff car if people are going, you know, to school and things like that. But for the vehicle, we do put money aside. And, and, and this is just for the vehicle. I will come back. We are working up quotes for, it'll have to get lights and siren and all that stuff, which is not inexpensive. But I want to, I want to get the vehicle. They're holding it for us. So if you approve it, then I'll get an, you know, we'll go through the, the council next week, and I'll be able to get it. So like I said, they're holding it right now.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining.
Let, let me answer the question this way. So when you talk about very large vehicles, meaning 800,000, million-dollar vehicles, there's a couple of different schools of thought. And Counselor Norris and I have talked about this. We've actually talked about this at this council, where you could pay now through putting money aside and building up your capital, or you could try to raise taxes, which is an enormous amount of money, or you could bond. But if you remember a couple of years ago, we had a truck that we needed to send out. Chassis was bad, engine was bad. We got that fixed. The good news is, we got it fixed, and we extended it to life. The bad news is, now the two trucks, the most expensive pieces of apparatus that we have, have shelf, have useless shelf life within 18 months of each other. Now, how do you pay for that? The good news is, because of building 600 and electric boat, our fees, so we had large amounts of fees, so we had a lot of money set, we had money, and that's one of the things that kept our taxes down. But we had money, so we set aside, the, the chief and Ron and I talked about setting aside $200,000 and $300,000 for the vehicles. And that's what, that's what we've done. Also, so when you authorize this one to go to the November 6th, on November 6th, just so that you're not surprised, there's going to be, there will be two more, and those are the, the two vehicles that this council authorized $100,000 for out of ARPA funds. So we will rescind the original motions, put in new motions, and the, the funding source will be from ARPA funds. So that's just to, to let you know. But the, but the, one of the things that, that we're doing is we are, right now, we currently have the fiscal discipline with the chief, with Ron, and with this, the mayor is setting now, to move forward and to set aside the money that we need so that we can buy one. My goal is for us to be able to buy one truck outright with cash, and then the other one is to bond. So does that also, does that add additional information?
It does.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this, on this discussion? All right, hearing none. Take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of November 6, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
All right, Sierra, you're up. Bring whoever you need to. If you need, Ron, thank you. Good job in being moral support. Okay, whenever you're ready. So the first item is the Economic Development Ordinance Revision, Economic Development Commission Ordinance Revision.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So yes, the first item on here is the EDC's ordinance revisions. So the Economic Development Commission is just really just doing some general housekeeping, reviewing all of the documents, ordinances, bylaws that have established us and that we operate under. And so the last time, or the first time the ordinance was approved was back in 2014. So you can see a host of different changes that really kind of just bring this ordinance into alignment with the state statute, and also gives us a little bit more flexibility with our membership, which also matches the state statute. So those are some of the major changes to this, but we just wanted to present this, these to you.
Okay. Questions or comments on this? This, we will follow the ordinance process that is delineated in the charter, which means the posting in the newspaper, the first, the initial approval, and then 30 days later, the final approval from council. And this is a process that this council is familiar with. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of November 6, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, resilience update, the updated CRP recommendations. Now, on Sierra, on these, these updates, are the rest of these just informing, or these actions as well?
Just informing.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you. You have the floor.
So you guys received a memo that kind of gives a summary of an update of where we are at. So I'll just kind of read a few things from that. So, you know, we finished the community resiliency plan back in May of 2022, and we've been reviewing the recommendations, identifying partners, and potentially projects that we can start to move forward. So over the coming months, I'm planning the economic development, is going to continue to build the city's capacity to actually start to address the recommendations. Just for reference, the recommendations are chapter six of the community resiliency plan, but they have also been updated into this little packet that provides all of the updates that we went through with the mayor of identifying who's doing what, what projects, who do we need to coordinate with moving forward on some of these recommended items. So over the next couple of months, we'll be having a series of meetings and workshops where departments get to collaborate with outside organizations to help us on this. And tonight, we'll be hearing from the Nature Conservancy on a specific project, but there are other projects that we are trying to identify and pull together to give us a kind of draft or portfolio of resiliency projects that we're working on here in the city. I did want to remind us that our community resiliency plan is similar to our plan of conservation and development, where it is a guiding document. So this is a living document. We are supposed to be updating this on a consistent basis. So you guys will obviously be seeing me more and more as we continue this discussion. So as far as this packet that you guys have of the resiliency recommendations, everything that is highlighted in like a gold-yellowish color are the ones that we found seem to be the priority based off of staff, projects that they're currently working on, current investment into, into some of these activities, and then just prioritizing some of these activities need to be done in order for us to kind of move on to additional steps. So that is highlighted in gold. And I also want to let you know, oh, these are also under, we went through this review with leadership. We are also going through this review with departments to really understand how they, what activities they're doing within each action and how we can kind of better coordinate things. So I will follow up with that as we move forward. And before I have Tim come up, I did just have some information for you guys. So for the Long Island Futures Fund, which is an app, a program that we did apply an application to, there is a little bit of information in your packets about that grant opportunity. And then there's an existing grant opportunity now, which is the Long Island Sound Community Impact Fund. They have letters of intent that are due in December. And these also cover projects that deal with enhanced community resilience and sustainability, and even have things such as planning and design sets that help through implementation. So I just wanted to highlight these programs because there is a lot of funding that is coming down to support resiliency projects. So as a city, we're just trying to get our ducks in a row and really identifying what projects we're moving forward with, where we are now, and kind of what is our need. That's kind of what this whole capacity building thing is working up to, along with scalable projects that we can actually start to move forward. So if you guys don't have any questions for me, I will, okay, I'll take questions before I have Tim come up.
Question, Counselor Norris?
Great. So when you say funding opportunities, and you've listed them here, are you saying you intend on seeking funding through these grants?
So for the first one, we actually did submit an application for it.
Okay.
The second one is an example of funding opportunities we can submit. If we have a, if we go through this process and identify a project that is appropriate for this funds, and we are in a position to submit, then I would definitely submit the letter of intent. If not, this particular Long Island Sound Community Investment Impact Fund, I believe it's on its first round of funding, and they do anticipate a second round. So if we are not available for this one, I definitely think it's something we should keep our eyes out for, for future submission.
Thank you.
Do you know if the, if these, these funding programs are rolling, or if they're fixed?
Um, I don't know. I can, I could give you more information on that.
And I guess the reason I bring it up to my council is that if they're rolling, then we have an opportunity several times a year. In order to do that, whereas opposed if they're fixed, we mainly have one or two opportunities a year. So, but we will continue to keep our eyes out for, excuse me, for funding opportunities. My apologies. Sarah, you have the floor, or Sierra, you have the floor.
Thank you. Were there any other questions for me before I bring up our presenter?
Anyone else? Okay.
So I can either control your presentation, or you'll just have an awkward mouse on the other side because it doesn't.
Doesn't reach over here?
It reaches, but it doesn't do well on glass.
Can we swap?
If you put a piece, if you put a piece of paper down, it'll, it should be okay on the paper. I've had to do that in the past. See if that's going to work.
Works well.
Okay, good.
Think I need new glasses. There we go. Actually, can I use this as well? Thank you. Nice to see you all. My name is Tim Clark. I'm with the Nature Conservancy in Connecticut. I'm the Resilient Southeastern Connecticut Program Director. I've been a part of the organization for a little over a year and a half now. I joined January 2022. I'm going to go through some slides fairly quickly so we can get down to the questions, which I think are the most important part. So just going to go over my background and how I got here today, the team that I work with, talk about the work that the Nature Conservancy has done with the city of Groton over the course of the last few years, and then we'll get down to the, the Futures Fund proposal that we submitted earlier this spring, and hopefully we should be finding out the, the news on, on soon. So just a quick background about myself. I am a registered landscape architect by training. So before I was at the Nature Conservancy, I worked at a landscape architecture firm in New York City called Scape Studio. We designed large-scale coastal resilience projects all over the country, but also smaller-scale parks, and basically everything in between. What that gives me is an ability to kind of think at a high level, meet with the community, and understand what their needs are, but then think about the smallest of small details down to what is the size of rebar we need in a concrete bench. It's not just me that you're getting when you work with the Nature Conservancy, though. I have a larger team alongside me. Some of those are shown on the screen here. We've got Drew Goldsman, who's a director of urban conservation, Holly Trinket, our director of river and estuary conservation, Diana, unfortunately, just departed last week for the EPA. She's on to bigger and better things, but she's, she's still in touch with us, and we will be filling her position. And you get Shelley Green, the director of conservation programs. We've also had additional hires since this photo was taken, so you're getting another two individuals. The Nature Conservancy, what have we been doing with the city of Groton? So working with the city of Groton has been taking place for a while, not just me. My supervisor, Adam Welshell, some of you have, have, may have interacted with in the past. He produced this report, the, the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Framework for Coastal Resilience. It's a mouthful. But that report identified a number of projects that would improve coastal resilience throughout southeastern Connecticut. Coastal resilience here has a fairly broad definition. It's not just thinking about storm surge and wave energy. It's also thinking about what happens when water falls inland and where it goes. And so the one project that really kind of came to the surface with the city of Groton was the, the Washington Park Lake George project. And that was a project that was kind of a, like, got to a conceptual level within the framework plan. But, and you can see some of that, that imagery up on the screen here, kind of a stormwater rain garden in the center of the park. And the good news is that this project was actually funded. It was funded under the, the 319 program, and it is being managed by the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. So TNC has a history of working with the city of Groton and hopefully making some significant changes in terms of, of how we're addressing the impacts of climate change. You can see the dollar figure for that full project design and construction up on the screen there. This falls within a suite of projects that was also identified in the community resilience plan that we were just hearing about. This is, this is really our guiding document when we're looking at projects to be evaluating within the city of Groton. And you can see that the, the Lake George project is also part of a larger suite of projects. And, and on the right, you can see Birch Plain Creek, and there's been a lot of work done around the idea of a multi-use trail. And, and that project would tie into that multi-use trail. So where, where are we with the, the Futures Fund proposal that we submitted this spring? We participated in some of the community workshops for the community resilience plan. I just realized that is the wrong year. This was March 7, 2022, when we were participating in these, and engaging with residents about what a future of Groton could look like as far as these, these natural spaces. It was a fantastic opportunity, and that is the foundation of a lot of the work that we're still doing today. On the screen, you're, you're seeing On the screen, you're, you're seeing a, a map with some funny boundaries drawn across it. Um, these are the citywide assessment zones that were called out within that community resilience plan. What we focused on was Five Corners. Why we arrived at Five Corners was that there was a vulnerability assessment done as part of that report. You can see the different assessment zones up on the screen here. Uh, the more red something is, the more vulnerable it is. The most red thing you see on that screen is, is the Five Corners Assessment Zone. So, I'm just gonna pull that up there. As far as what the vulnerabilities are, I'm not gonna dive in too deeply because I'm gonna show you in a second what they are. Which is to say that Five Corners, as you all well know, is a hill. Uh, and there are low points within that hill that, that kind of aggregate the water. And result in pretty dramatic flooding during, during large rainstorm events. Um, flooding that will result in significant scouring and erosion uh, and subsidence. And you can see on the lower right there, an image of the security fence around EB that collapsed during some fairly significant erosion after a storm. Uh, here are some additional images that just show the extent of stormwater flooding experienced within the Five Corners. Whenever you see manhole covers blowing off, it's, it's not a good thing. And we need to think about how stormwater can be handled in a different way. So, we, we looked at the community resilience plan and there were a number of recommendations around addressing flooding within the Five Corners neighborhood. They're all fantastic and if you squint, maybe it's just me who needs to squint. Um, you can see a number of those recommendations, one through six. Um, going all the way from conducting a comprehensive stormwater runoff study. All the way down to increasing the capacity of stormwater infrastructure. But to get lower down on that list, you first have to do the stormwater runoff study. And so that's what we're proposing to do with the Futures Fund. We feel that if we are able to unlock that kind of first critical step. That we can then open up the potential to be doing additional projects in the future. Being, seeking out additional grant funding opportunities to then realize those solutions. So, we effectively just took the work that was done by Sierra and her team. And translated into a grant proposal to secure funding to uh, address recommendation four point one point one. Which is to conduct a comprehensive runoff study. So we applied for that funding in May. And you can see here, this is, these are the kind of the broad buckets of work that we would be doing. We'd be conducting a stormwater study. We would develop a stormwater plan for the Five Corners area. And that would include GSI green stormwater infrastructure recommendations. And we would also conduct what we're calling a planting while planning approach. Um, what that, what that approach is, is basically saying, we're not gonna do all this planning work. And then once it's all done, go and get another grant and do some projects. We're, we're gonna be planning, but while we're doing that, the time is now. We can start planting trees. Um, we can introduce additional canopy into the Five Corners area. So, even though this was not part of the grant funding opportunity, this, this uh, started this summer. Um, and we donated uh, a few hundred native plants to be given out on Community Day. I heard it was a big hit. We're gonna hopefully provide more plants in the future. Um, we lo- we love getting native plants out and, and also some fruiting shrubs, which I'm particularly fond of. Um, so, to go back to the, the, the fu- the Futures Fund proposal for a second. Um, you can see, we're gonna be managing the grant. We're in that, that light blue at the center. But we don't think that we're really the ones making the decisions. We feel that we're working on behalf of the city of Groton and community members within the city of Groton. Uh, I think what we've seen in conversations both with Sierra and frankly, all across the state, even when you talk to Connecticut deep. Everybody is, is strapped for staff and it's very difficult to manage these grants. It's a lot of work just in the managing of the grant itself. And so what we see as really our major contribution is we're gonna manage the grant. We're gonna manage the consultants that are required to do the work within that grant. And so that could include a civil engineer, a landscape architect, and any additional consultants. Um, that way, we're hopefully just taking the burden of grants off of your plate. You get the benefits, but you don't get all the pain points that come with these grant funding opportunities. So, next steps, uh, we are gonna be leading a discussion group for the fall capacity building workshops. And then we should be finding out in the next month or so as to whether or not our Futures Fund grant application was successful. Obviously, once we, we find out about that, we'll be letting you all know. Um, and fingers crossed, because we'd love to realize the, the many benefits of that work. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Devoe?
Um, I just want to say the last huge rainstorm, I was, I drove down. Um, and it was so flooded, I think it was blocked off at one point. Um, and it is really dangerous, that particular area of the city. And I just want to say thank you. I, I know that for a lot of things in the city, we have to contract out to experts. Because we are small, we can't hire um, landscape architect experts to look at every area of the city. Um, it's just not possible. So, um, I think all these partnerships in the community are so valuable. And um, you know, I think it's really nice to have you present at a meeting. Because I think residents don't always see what's going on behind the scenes and how much work, for example, Sierra is doing with all of these different contractors and partnerships. To impact the amount of work that she can get done um, in the city. Um, so I really like that we're doing um, these periodic presentations of, of these types of things. And I think it keeps, at least for us, you know, we, we do have a lot going on in the city and it keeps us interested and aware of how these projects are moving. Um, I know we got, a lot of stuff got delayed because of, of COVID. And I feel like we are ramping up and rolling forward and kind of accelerating a little bit on some of these projects. And um, so I just appreciate the um, explanation and showing where we're, where we're headed. Because I think this is such a good, good direction. That is a really good place to start in. It's a good place. Um, because it'll be really noticeable if we can make an impact in that area. Um, it's a really noticeable area to the residents because we get a lot of traffic through there, so.
So one of the things that we're looking at is, one, how to, how to control the water. That's going down there, but the other thing that we're looking at is how do you prevent the water from coming down? And it could be, because if you think about this, you have sheet flow coming from Sacred Heart. You have sheet flow coming from the different roads, from Benham coming down, from uh, Mitchell Street. And then they go down and it goes down Paquonic and goes down John Street and all that. And when we built, when we did the full-depth reclamation on Thing Street, we put in an oversized pipe. I mean, it's like this big around to take the water through now. Uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna continue to look at that, but this hydrologic survey is important to us to determine. Where the water's coming from, where it's going, and then we can do preventative measures and control measures. And that will give us, that will give us a future, no, it's not true, not a future, that will give us. Uh, actually, future actions that we're gonna take. And then probably other grants we're gonna need to go after in order to help pay for those capital projects. So, uh, Councilor Piazza.
Mayor, so historically, um. When were we noticing stormwater being significant impact as far as flooding? Do we know that historically, when it all began and the causing agent of it? I'm just saying it because living in Groton as, as long as I have, I've never seen the stairs flood like that at all.
You've never seen them flood?
Uh, no, I've never. When I was younger, it never flooded.
But you've seen them since?
Yes, that's why I'm, that's why I'm saying historically, when it started, and I, me, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect or economical. Economic development person, but you know, it just kind of makes me think of looking at Groton City when I was raised there. In that particular area, near Five Corners and all the gardens and foliage that people had. And now we have more parking lots and wonder if that was a donation to it. Not saying, I'm saying it was wrong, you know, people need parking. But that's what I see the difference. I'm wondering if that has had a hu- huge impact. And, you know, if we're having more uh, employees coming in and we're looking for more parking, it's, it's kind of like, are we pounding sand here, you know? It's gonna have to be an even kind of deal here, you know?
So, there, there's a few things that I can say for certain. More impervious surface area is going to lead to more stormwater runoff, right? So the more parking lots there are, the more paved surfaces, the more water is gonna be moving around this area. Um, that's number one. Number two is absolutely rainfall intensity is increasing. Um, the storms we deal with, in fact, you know, look at Vermont from this summer. That was just a rainstorm. That was not a hurricane and they received ten inches of rain in a day. Some just unprecedented volumes of water are now falling onto our landscape. And so, you at once have more water and you have less surfaces that are able to take them up. So now you have a staircase that's become a waterfall. So. Yeah, that's the big change. And then, so, so one of the questions is how do we deal with it, right? Because we're, to your point, we're not gonna be able to do away with parking lots. And so what we wrote into the proposal is, though we're the Nature Conservancy, we want to have as much green stormwater infrastructure as possible. We acknowledge that it's not always the only fix. And so one of the things we're gonna be exploring um, are things like uh, underground cisterns. That could go under the parking lots. That would basically be large perforated pipes. That would allow for that stormwater to be discharged back into the ground in a way that mimics a natural process. But it's being done within an engineered system.
So when you talk about pervious, impervious surfaces. So, when uh, we sent Heidi back to take over. Or to fill the position back in uh, Public Works. She's my MS four coordinator and one of the things that Hartford has challenged us with. Is trying to reduce the impervious surfaces that we have. So, we're trying to identify surfaces and see if we can get those dug up if we can. And then plant grass or go to a, go from pervious, go from impervious to a pervious surface. In planning, uh, Leslie has looked at, if you have to have a parking lot, then for every ten spaces, you gotta have a place for a tree. Or a bio swell or some way for the water to go. Now, to address your issue about parking, we have it set up in our parking uh, uh, in our uh, parking regulations. Now, that additional parking lots are not gonna be established. And the thing about people being able to pave and put parking in front of, in their, in their houses, that's not gonna be allowed in the future. So, we're gonna have to figure out what we're doing with the parking. We're currently, there is a JLS Parking Management Plan, Mark Management Study, an included plan. And we're working with Electric Boat on that to find parking, uh, they are, to find parking for their folks. And the chief and I are talking about a parking management plan within the city that I will be bringing forward probably in the next year. So, Councilor Nor- uh, Councilor, excuse me, Councilor Sheffield?
Uh, since I'm a Five Corners resident and I live right in the heart of where the water is running. Uh, especially right on Dennison, where there's parking lot across the street from my house. Then at the corner of Hamilton, which is, that's where the water drive goes right down those stairs. Um, and then you have parking lot on the other side of Paquonic, the big lot in back of EB. There, there isn't any grass or anything to stop the water. So, and then it just goes right on down. How that's gonna get resolved, um, unless you, you know, like I said, you're gonna have to go deep under from another source. To get it, to pump it out, uh, I don't know, I, that's, that's uh, to me, a tall order. Uh, especially telling owners who own lots on the street to like, uh, you know. We gotta uh, get rid of your, your parking areas. Uh, that's, that's gonna be tough. So. Uh, good luck trying to figure that part out.
It's a good thing you found a tall man to deal with a tall order because I, I think we're, we're up to the task and. I absolutely appreciate where you're coming from. It's, it seems impossible. Um, nobody wants to get rid of parking spots. That's, that's, that's revenue, right?
Exactly, that's what people are, revenue off it, so.
But I think there are, there are incentives through the MS four programs and, and, or three nineteen funding programs in it. And other external funding sources where you could work with private property owners to make upgrades on their lots. And do subsurface infiltration. So again, you're, you're addressing the, the upstream kind of sources of that water. Um, but yeah, it's a challenge.
Yeah, because I mean, I sit up high and then it just drops right down towards Thing Street. So that's, you know, you're just running just downhill from there, so.
Yep.
And although we're talking about the private realm of it, there is also the public realm where we will have some more flexibility to do things. And then just try to cultivate those private relationships.
Councilor Piazza?
Think I was just gonna say what Councilor Sheffield was talking about and all that, because I used to live right around the corner of Dennison. That's what I'm talking about. So all those parking lots were beautiful gardens, beautiful grapevines, beautiful fig trees and all that, so that, you know, incorporate. But those also with encouragement, you know, get people to, on their own private thing, do raise gardens or gardens again. And that also still could be revenue, a small revenue packet for them too.
Yep. Uh, Councilor Norris?
Thank you. Please thank uh, Mr. Rockback there and the rest of the crew. So, I think this is important. And, and because the financial and livable sustainability of Groton City is very dependent. On what we do with tackling these kind of situations. Because if we don't, the dollar figure, just to mitigate, forget, i- i- it's just could be astronomical. So, thank you. But a quick question about the grant that you applied for. Do you know what the support history or distribution of that? Is it usually, they give you a hundred percent of what you ask? Or is it that there's a bucket, you know, pretty much like the Recreation Trails Grant? There's X dollars and they just divide it and reduce. How do they disperse award?
So, actually, in the article that I gave you guys, so it is a pool of funding. And then they have different kind of buckets or categories that they would like projects to kind of fall within. Um, so it does do that, but this gives you an example of some of the types of projects. That they are funding and kind of what that bucket is. So it is very broad, so.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm answering your question.
And to, to the first question, um, there are instances where they won't necessarily provide the full amount of funding that you've requested. And there will, there will be negotiations though to figure out what that, they won't just come down with a dollar figure. And so you asked for X and we're giving you Y.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sierra, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. No, that was an extra one. Yeah. Thanks for asking. I think I scribbled all over mine.